This time I'd like to call the Nash Rocky Mount Board of Education to order. And I'd also like to call the Nash County Board of Commissioners back in session from their recess meeting. Frankie, you want me to introduce and present?
Please, sir.
Okay. And if you will, actually, I found out this morning early that Mr. Oakley has the flu. He asked that I want him to come, and I said, "We definitely do not want you to come." But, and of course, we know better probably anyway, because she's handled y'all's projects in the past. She is also a principal, and with her is David Griffin. And David also is in the office as a project manager. I don't know what his official title is. And then Frankie Joyner is the person that handles the field operations for Oakley Collier. And I'll let you tell that background. I know they all have been with you a very long time. And I would turn it over to you. I greatly appreciate y'all coming to make this presentation tonight. And of course, the Board of Commissioners greatly appreciate the school board's willingness to have them here tonight.
Well, thank you very, thank you very much. We appreciate greatly the opportunity to stand before you and help tell you a little bit about architecture, and educate, and do some information for you. As Robbie said, I'm Ann Collier. I'm a principal and part owner of Oakley Collier Architects here in Rocky Mount. And Tim does have the flu. He sends his apologies. He would definitely be here if that weren't the case, but we did tell him to stay away. David Griffin that Robbie introduced, both David and Frankie, and myself, have been in the firm for 20-plus years. So, we have a long history here and with the firm. David is one of our principal project managers in the firm, handles projects from the beginning to the end. Frankie is construction administration primarily, and he does some front-end work with us for evaluation of buildings and things like that. So, that's who we are. We also, I'll do a little more in-depth. David's wife is a principal in the school system with you all, and so we-
So, I know more than I should.
He says he lives the elementary school life every day. Michelle, thank you for being here too. And Frankie's wife is a teacher too. I'm from a teacher family, so we love education. And we're not going to do a selling point about us, but just to give you a little background on where we come from. So, we are going to, we were asked tonight to present to you what to expect from an architect. You know, you're making some big decisions right now. And I know some, I've studied and looked at some of the background of things you've done so far. And what we want to do is help inform you about some of the things we do that you may or may not understand or know about, or have been told already. So, we're going to go through several slides, and we will each partake in some of it. We'll be glad to answer questions if you need to, but we've got some time too at the end to answer. So, one of the things we like to say, or in our profession, what is often said, is architects know a lot about, excuse me, a little bit about a lot of things. Engineers know a lot about a few things. And contractors, excuse me Robbie, know everything about everything. So, that's not, that's just tongue-in-cheek. And I have to start there, because we do touch, architecture touches just about every component of a building project. And so, and it's fun. It's a lot of fun. We enjoy what we do. But basically, our basic services cover from day one to, and I can't even kind of tell you the end of a project, because we go way beyond that in a lot of situations. It depends on the project. But we are first and foremost the owner's advocate. We work for you. And I'm going to address this like the school system, because I know you have the project at hand. And I'm not selling us. I'm just trying to tell you as an architect what an architect should do for you. We are also your liaison. And that liaison is depending to whom, upon what part of construction or design you're in. So, in the beginning, it's a liaison among the design team and how the pieces come together. In bidding, it's a liaison, and construction, it's a liaison to the contractors, and how, what questions they ask, and decisions there, or what they're trying to do in building. But mainly, we're your advocate, we're your liaison. And this, what I'm going to tell you too, is I have two contracts here actually. This one is a copy of actually our most recent one we did for you, which was at Middlesex. So, you have a little different contract, same components, just written a little differently than our standard AIA contracts. But the things I'm going to talk to you tonight are all in the contracts. So, contractually, these are things that we're obligated to do for you. They're not just things we would like to. They're things we are obligated, and you should expect from any architect you work with. Design team management and programming, evaluation and planning of your site, project budgeting, schematic, design development, construction documents, bidding, construction admin, closeout, and warranty are sort of the soup to nuts in what we do for every project. There are also in the contracts supplemental services. To be honest, in the AIA contract, and I'll speak to that primarily here, there is a list of, a checklist, if you will, of about 30 items that they consider supplemental. For our particular firm, there are a lot of things that we do that are just necessary to our work, so we include them as basic services. It doesn't matter whether you paid us more money to do them. We would have to do them anyway. So, we just decide, it's not really a if, if you want it, it's something we need to have happen. But there are supplemental services, and I will say, programming is one of those, and we'll get to that in a minute. But supplemental services that are things we can do for you, but don't always do for every project, are some of the things more often asked or things on the screen. You may want to determine if your facilities are up to stuff, or a five-year plan, master plan for your facilities, things like that. Full-time onsite project representation. Frankie is a part-time by contract, but we can provide full-time. And we have done that in projects. Post-occupancy evaluations, those are things to see how the building's performing after you've been in it a year, two years, three years. Support services, telecommunications, you know, those are just some of the things. And security commissioning, furniture fixtures, design. So, again, this list is not comprehensive. It's just a partial list of items that we get asked about providing services for in some projects. So, I'll go through the first basics. I'm going to go through the basic services and kind of explain what we would do for you in those. As your advocate, like I said, we are going to be your partner. We're going to be, we're going to answer to you. We are going to advise you. We're going to try to help you make informed decisions as the process goes forward. We're also designer creators. And we also become that liaison to the contractor. And the biggest thing, I think, for you to understand is that we are responsible to you and liable. We have professional liability insurance. When we design something that has errors and omissions, if we design something that doesn't work, we are obligated to you to fix that. So, and that relates to the whole design team. So, that is our consultants as well. But we want you, we just want to be, an architect should be your partner through the design process. And sort of that, just in a graphic term, there is a relationship between the architect and contractor, but it's not contractual. It's, sometimes you think of it as a forced marriage, but we like to make that relationship work as a partnership as well. But both the contractor and the architect would work for you as the owner, basically. And then we have our subconsultants and subcontractors. From a design team standpoint, your architect is the leader of the design team. We employ civil engineers, structural engineers, mechanical, electrical, plumbing engineers, fire protection, cost consultants, co-consultants, there are any number of team members, depending on the size and the scope of the project, that may be in there. The architect's responsible for handling and managing that process and those members of the team. And again, that whole team is responsible for the design of the project. Contractors, I want to touch a minute on this. We work in a lot of different arenas of projects, and there's a lot of different delivery methods that are offered now for public projects. So, the traditional, the relationship that you as an owner would have with a contractor would depend on the delivery method that you choose. Traditionally, design, bid, build is what has been happening here in Nash County and in most of eastern North Carolina. That is, we draw a set of plans, put it out on the streets for bid. We get any number of contractors coming in to submit a quote or a price for them. And then you, as a public entity, select the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. So, that, there are pros and cons to all the methods of contracting. That is a very good method for getting a good price for a project. I would suggest if that's, and I'm not advocating any of these to you tonight, but if you, that's the method that you choose to pursue, I would definitely have your architect do pre-qualification of contractors. What that does, since the recession occurred, there were a lot of good contractors that couldn't make it and went out of business, to be honest. And so, now what we're facing are sometimes labor shortages in contractors that don't have the experience, that are back in the field. Luckily, in this area, we have a lot of good qualified contractors. But there are some that we encounter that have come from out of state that want to set up shop, and they don't have a lot of North Carolina experience. They don't have experience with local jurisdictions. And so, pre-qualifications is not, is not an extra service. It's not an extra cost. What happens with that is your architect would submit a pre-qualification RFQ during the design process while things are under design. And the contract, and they let anyone respond, and then the evaluation occurs of who has the experience, who has the wherewithal financially. Financial statements are asked, requested for that, what the bonding capacity for the firm is. We now, some lessons learned along this, the last few years. We now check references and licensing and bonding capacities for a lot of the firms, the companies that we work with. Just because there are people we've never heard of bidding work now. And so, that, that does, that can make a very successful project or a very difficult project, depending on the contractor that you get as low bid. Another method that we see a lot of right now is construction manager at risk. We do a lot of work with the state of North Carolina as well. They have a recommended threshold of $5 million as a baseline to do construction manager at risk. Your project's well beyond that. The process there, and why I want to talk about this a little bit, is it changes the relationship with the architect and the contractor for, it happens a lot sooner. So, if that's the method you would choose, you would submit RFQs for contractors, construction managers at risk during design. They've become part of the team, and so it goes along from there. They do still competitively bid subcontractor trades, but it happens during the process, and you choose who the contractor you're going to work with. It does cost more money, and I will say that. There's pre-construction fees that are paid for that service. And there is, but the pros of it, there's quality that's more controlled, and there's a timeline and a guaranteed maximum price. Just two different, two different ways of doing it. It does change the relationship that you have with the contractor, depending on what you would choose. So, we can just, we can move on to. But the architect's involved in all of that, that selection and all of those things. Programming and needs identification is a phase of design. Again, in the AIA contract, and we always wonder, you know, we, architects write this, so, they, sometimes it's a little self-serving, to be honest. But programming is listed as a supplemental service. But programming is when you determine the size and the scope and the components in your building. And there's no way we can do design without knowing that. So, personally, for our firm, we consider that as a basic service, because we're going to do that regardless of whether it's an additional or not. But what would happen with your architect in programming is, and again, in all this work, I want to help you understand what would be the responsibility the owner would have in this, so how that works. We would need to meet with instructional personnel, with staff, with leadership and staff, to determine the expectations and the goals of the project, what number of students. You've made a decision on location, that's already there. And then we look, work with school planning and DPI on standards, and their recommended, excuse me, sizes of classrooms and other amenities in the schools. What it does, it sets a baseline for size of a building, which then in turn establishes parameters for budgeting. Because right now, in this kind of phase, we would look at square footage costs. So, we don't really, we have not gotten into the design yet, just a basic layout. We know a size. We know very, very well what construction costs are, so we use a square foot, cost per square foot. And also, because of the size of the building, it will establish a delivery timeline. So, those three things, scope, cost, and timeline, are put into this programming piece along with a lay, a rough layout. None of it is set in stone. It's just a guiding force to start with. Generally speaking, I would say two to three options are usually what it takes to get to the thing, to the plan that everyone's comfortable with moving forward. Sometimes it can be done in one or two, but it's usually within three. It's, everyone's like, "Yeah, okay, I think we like that." Again, the responsibility that you should expect as an owner in that process is to be available and involved for stakeholder interviews and meetings, and giving feedback on what you're seeing come out of your architect. So, you know, if you see something, you know, we have a saying, "We submit for rejection." We have thick skins. We do it every day. It is, it is just a process. Football that we kick around, right?
It's easier to tell us what you don't like usually than what you do like.
It's hard to look at a blank sheet of paper and say what you want, but it's really easy to look at something on paper and say what you don't like. Yeah. So, another tool that an architect will do for you is site evaluation. And I know you've already selected a site. We talked about this for a little while. So, after your site's selected, what you really need to determine then is how the building fits on the site, what are the types of, what are the multiple layouts, or what layouts might work, what are the options if you move things? And where do the playgrounds go? Where does the parking go? How does the loading work? How do you separate buses from, you know, all of those things? So, you really want to evaluate where, you know, if you have a site selected and you do, what that looks like. We look at security on your site. Starts on the perimeter, and it starts going inward from there. There are tools, and there's design methods that are used to do that. And then we look at master planning. You know, if you choose for, and I'm going to pick numbers, because I don't know your scope fully yet at this point. If you choose to start with 600 students, but you build an 800 core, how do you grow that school for 800, for the 200 more students? Where does the growth occur? So, all of that, master planning's done at this first stage, so that you don't build something that won't work 10 years down the road when you need to grow. So, if you hadn't, had not selected a site, your architect can also, while we do not do acquisition of properties with you, we can review properties. And actually, we're working with several counties in eastern North Carolina right now, regular, not school systems, but counties, to review properties for different sized buildings and complexes that they're considering. So, by the programming that we've done, we understand the size of a building. We know the parking that's needed, so then that determines acreage needed. We can start looking at properties of certain acreage and how, what utilities are there, how parking's laid out, access, et cetera. Test fits, if you will. So, and also, in that investigation, there's a lot of information where we can find out any potential environmental issues. So, we do a lot of, and again, digressing a little bit to Oakley, we do a lot of USDA work. And every time we do a USDA project, we're required to do environmental research and reports for that. So, those are some things to just know when you're looking, you know, for future sites, so. And again, that helps establish budget numbers as well. Okay. My last slide, and I'm going to let David do it. I'll start, and you can filter in a little. So, budgeting is probably one of the most important things that happens day one and continues through the whole project, because you have a set budget right now. I mean, we know that, and so you're not going to have more money. We don't anticipate that you have more money. And so, you, and we, the whole need right now is not completely known. So, there's a set number of dollars, and it's very important for your architect to know what they're working with from day one. One of the things, as we talked about with the programming, and can develop size of a building, which in turn develops dollars, then those dollars are just construction at that point. And we need to equate that into a total project budget. So, we will not start a project, or any architect should not start a project, without looking at the total project. You can't build a school and not furnish it. You can't build a school and not put, you know, data wiring in the facility. So, there are a lot of things that come after the fact of construction that are part of the cost that need to be factored in from day one. So, we've got, we've got some budget forms that we typically use, and it goes sort of in that, in that list right there. The construction budget with site included. If there's land acquisition or legal fees that you've spent, that's put in there, so we can keep track of that. Any soft cost as of, again, feasibility studies for site work. Again, with new sites, those are more prevalent. Environmental reports, appraisals, typographical surveys. You will need to have for this particular project to a typographical survey done. That's a project soft cost, because that will happen before, it could happen right now. You know, you've got a site selected. That could get in process to be done, along with geotechnical testing, so et cetera. You'll see, you see the list. All of those things play into a cost of a project. You'll have design and engineering fees. We typically, in this early stage, hold out percentages of construction costs for technology and data and security, because at that time, we know generally what it should cost, but we don't know all the pieces and parts yet. So, we put what we call a placeholder. And it can be anywhere from 3% to 10% of a project, depending on the size of a project, and the side, and the level of need for the owner. The same thing with equipment and furnishings. You know, right now, if you know, based on a DPI, if you're going to have an 80,000-foot school and it has 45 classrooms, you kind of get an idea of numbers of chairs and tables and desks and things you need, but you don't know exactly. So, we placeholder it at an early stage with a percentage number, and then come back and continually refine it. We always recommend contingencies for projects. Again, probably comes from some of our USDA work that requires 5% contingency for a project. That is unknowns, that's your money, all of it's your money. That is all controlled by you. You can spend it however you want at any point. It can pay for surveys, but contingencies are very important to have. And then if there are any financing costs that you have, of course, that may not be applicable for this project with the county, but there could be county financing costs. Again, spend a little time. We start on the 30,000-foot view with square footage costs. As we hone into design more, we start looking at line item detailed costs, so we understand more components, more pieces and parts of a building. And then we also use real-time bidding costs. We bid work, I won't say every week, but at least once a month or so, we're bidding work of different scales and different construction types. So, we keep real-time costs, and we talk to other contractors and other architects about that. So, we always are watching costs, and your architect, any architect you should, should be doing that. We continually, continuously monitor it during design. We'll touch that a little more. And I think the key item, I want you to know that you should not hire an architect who doesn't know what their building's going to cost. And you should not hire an architect who gives you a low-ball number. And I say that because things are so volatile right now. You should look, have someone who looks after your interests. We don't want to be surprised on bid day. And if we were your architect, we would not want to go, "Oh, who knew that that was going to be $350 a square foot? We thought it was 175." So, continually monitoring the cost is super important. One of the other ways we do that is in the design process, watching what we're designing, talking with our engineers, doing a lot of coordination, talking, going through budget items. We do a lot of research with vendors, with subcontractors, with any number of consultants outside our firm to look at cost of things, so that we can vet what we think things should be costing. And that happens during the process, so that you don't get to the bid day and then have to start taking things out because it's over budget. And we're pretty good at that. It's not 100% all the time, because there are some things that just, you know, hit you out of nowhere. But we are very good at keeping our budgets in the cost that we told you it was going to be. Now, you can talk.
I'm going to kind of pick up where Ann left off on cost. Designing a facility, any facility, designing you the perfect facility is easy. Put a cost limitation on it is where it gets challenging. I mean, that's, we design from your needs, your wishes, things you have to have via code. All this drives our final design, but whether we have a third party, somebody else checking your numbers, they're really validation. Cost is part of the design work we have to do. It's just, you've given us a marker at the end. We've got to hit that goalpost. So, every decision we make through that process has a cost factor. Our job, we can't spend your money. Our job is to educate you on how best to spend your money. So, you give us your wish list, we'll do an initial assessment, like through the program. We know how big the scope is. Then we start to align it with your budget. If something is out of line or skewed, our job is to come back to you as a board and say, "All right, we can't get you to there with your wish list." And you start to make assessments or priority lists to get it to fit back to that budget. It is a team effort. Our role is to help you make that decision, but not really, I guess, Stan's point. I don't want to come in and tell you, "You're going to get that school for that price on bid day," because if it comes in over, it is now our burden on our nickel to try to fix it and get you back in line. So, there's no incentive for your architect to try to say yes to everything you ask for, because if it's not going to come in on bid day, we all need to know that from the schematic design, through the design development, all the way to construction drawing. And we have to look at all the costs. Ann's point, you've got other costs associated with your building, other than just the construction. So, if you've given us a fixed number, we have to back those out. I can't spend your IT money on bricks and mortar. I can't spend your survey or your geotech on our building, because you will have those costs. You have set your number for your budget, and our goal is to help you get there the best we can. Design development is when we move on. We've given you a schematic design that you've approved. It's usually a floor plan, a look of an elevation. Now, we're going to start to develop that. Our role is to choose the most appropriate construction method currently priced, because that evolves over time. Some things are cheaper, to help you get the building you need for the square footage that your program says you need. If you tell us you need 80,000-square-foot building, and everything we look at says that budget is beyond what you've got, we've got to start getting creative on how to get there. Whether it's ways to expand, a better way to handle site cost, because that's also a big impact to your project. So, you get a price update from us at SD Design Development. We do it again at Construction Drawings. If you have a owner's rep, they're going to do the same. And they're really validating the numbers we tell you as a second check. But it doesn't omit the fact, we have to do that, because we can't get to your design without knowing that cost.
And I'd add one thing that's not up here. The firm that you ultimately work with should have a dedicated field operations guy. It's Robbie, call me Hal. This is the point where plans and specs start to come together on what looks like a living, breathing thing on paper. It's not just lines. This is where the field guy should be looking at the plans going, "This is constructibility, this is not. This will work, this won't. My experience says this detail is better over here versus over there." And help the, excuse me, help the project managers and the draft people and the consultants cross-coordinate all their trades between the civil, the structural, the MEPs, the fire protection, the data folks, and the architects who are going to life safety and the finishes. There's a lot of pieces that can get tangled up along the way. Field operation guys, they know stuff that comes up in the field that can help untangle this on the design side.
One of the things, and I, so again, don't know about other firms. I just can tell you kind of how we handle this. We do weekly, like Frankie said, for two things. We do weekly, like Frankie said, for two things. We do weekly coordination meetings with our full design team. The owner is always invited. So we talked about what are responsibilities of the owner. You would always be invited, you can choose to attend or not. And these are on, these are go-to meeting and by telephone. So it's no, no travel time or anything like that. And that happens because of just what Frankie said, the quality control process that starts in the early stages of design, that are continually trying to, to figure out where the pieces go. And so the second thing is another key piece here, I think, that we, you know, we, again, architecture's not a perfect trade, construction's not a perfect trade, we learn lessons all along the way. And, and our firm has done that as well. Again, with a lot of our state, state construction work, they require us to do lifecycle cost analysis at this stage. Those are great tools. We evaluate mechanical systems, building envelope, thermal qualities, lighting, all the things that day one, we evaluate day one costs versus long-term costs. And what is the best long-term result for you? I can't tell you, we used to do that years ago, because it was not, not a thing that most people did. We've learned how. It's very interesting to see how, in fact, for state construction work, we have to bid two systems of mechanical systems. And we bid a base bid and we bid a lifecycle cost system to see what the incremental difference is in the two. We did that most recently at Nash Community College. It turned out that the lifecycle cost, the higher cost of the, the alternate bid turned out to be less money over the long haul of the system for the owner. So yes, we paid a little more on day one at the bid, but it saved them operational dollars as the building got older. So that's, this is the, the place you wanna do that, just to real, evaluate your systems and what you're doing and what you're getting.
You'll hear some terms like value engineering, cost avoidance. If we do our role correctly, to give you a design that meets your budget, value engineering should be something like, I can get this carpet from another vendor, equal quality, save you some money. That's a valid value engineering item. But to come in and say, hey, I can't give you the back half of that building, alright, that's means we missed early on. Meaning we give you a budget that was not obtainable and you're starting to lose what you call part of your program. Or if your staff says, we got mechanical systems, this is what we must have, we have to include that in our cost day one. I might be able to give you a cheaper system, but if it doesn't meet your requirements, then it really didn't meet your goal. That's our role, like I said, from early design, is to try to incorporate all your wishes to give you the best end product. So I can always say, I can save you money, it's kinda like going to the car dealer. We all want all the options. He says, I can get you in your budget for one without the options. Okay, yes, I can get that car, but that's not really what I wanted. So we're trying to get you the high-end options you need, and somewhere's gonna be that fine line of what I call the baseline. There's always a wish list, but it's finding what you really need to make that school work over the long haul.
We, we have, and you can keep going, but I'll just have this, at every stage of design phases, we don't, we do not move forward until you or your representative says we're satisfied. And, and that includes, you know, there, there are key points, I think, to come make presentations to the board, a baseline of this is what it looks like, this is what the initial cost is. And then we go do our work and then we come back. Sometime, design development, early construction documents of here's an update of what this looks like. Those are more things just for your, so that you can be informed.
Construction draw, that is just the final plans and specifications that go out to bid or to your contractor. That set of documents for a school is gonna be a massive set of paperwork, a lot of specifications. But that is what we do to try to ensure your contractor builds you exactly what he should build you. Then it'll be Frankie's job during construction to make sure everything is in compliance with those drawings and documents. So we're really still, once again, we're working for you as your owner's rep to make sure you get what you paid for. That's our contractual obligation and it's our best incentive to make that happen, cause we all know that's the right product at the end that makes everybody happy, versus having any type of controversy at the end of the project.
We, we, a couple, I could, just a couple things to, so I was thinking about our list here and how we, what we wanted to tell you about when we made our list. We start early on with regulatory agencies. And again, depends on the project for this, for particular, for school, we would contact school planning in the first phase of design. And that's just say, here's what we're thinking about, let's talk about it. Do you see any things, you know, what, what do you guys think? We do all that to prepare for this phase when we have to submit for approval, because you, you, there are certain approvals that we have to have before we can bid, before we can construct, before we can permit. And so those early conversations with the local regulatory agencies or our local authorities having jurisdiction, always help the end result of getting things keeping to move smoothly. We know what we need to happen from our standpoint, and that's just to keep that moving without stopping for 30 or 60 days waiting on a review. So that's all built into a timeline as we move forward in design.
Also, I just through this process, I don't think we mentioned, public forum or presentations, since you're a public board. We will be the mouthpiece for you, if you choose, at those public forums. We all know in a public forum, there's always pros and cons, the cave people, the citizens against virtually everything. Let us take the heat for you. We'll, I mean, that's our role, is we can do that presentation, take the conversation if you so choose, so you're not always having to front all the different opinions, suggestions and that show up in that environment.
And on the converse, early stages of having public forums with drawings and plans gets people excited. And so people, generally when people are against something, it's because they don't understand it. And so those things can be that invaluable, and that's part of, just part of this process as well. Let me take that guy over.
Sure.
For bidding, again, we've completed drawings and your bidding, in the bidding and negotiations phase, this, there's five phases in design, this is the fourth, no, six phases, this is the fourth phase. This is when advertising the project, you are a public agency, distributing the bidding documents, and actually, these came right out of the contract again, conducting pre-bid conferences. Again, you are invited to these, to the conferences and any meeting, it's your choice whether you want to be there. We hold them all the time when owners don't come. And, and that's just up to an owner. We respond to bidders' questions, we prepare addenda, we conduct the formal bid opening. That's key, that's a legal proceeding. And so that is, we ducks have to be in a row. So the formal bid opening is when the bids are received. There's a lot of organization and paperwork and requirements that the bidders have to comply with, that we are responsible for making sure they know. And then we document all of that information, again, return it back to you with our recommendation for award. And then in your responsibility as a board, you only have to provide us a location for the bid opening and the pre-construction meeting. And you only have to approve the bids as submitted, or not approve them, that's your call. So that's really, in that phase, it is a lot of work the architects and the consultants are doing to move the project forward and answer questions and to get good bidders. Our responsibility is to bring bidders to you. That's another thing we feel very firmly about. We have not had a project bid where we did not have at least three bidders. That's the minimum. And the most recent, we had nine bidders, I think. And, and it was a, a small 2,500 square foot parks and recreation administration building. So, you know, big projects, small projects, you'll attract bidders for this, but it's still our responsibility to make sure qualified bidders come to the table.
Ann.
Yes.
If I may ask you a question.
Yes.
You had mentioned earlier about accepting low bid with some qualifications to that. Can you tell us a little bit about what those recommendations, I mean, obviously, you don't take the cheapest because it might not get the job done.
So with pre-qualifications, that, that, what that says is any, what happens with pre-qualification system is we do that early in the process. So when we get to the point of bidding, we know who is going to bid the job. And if someone else comes up at then and says, oh, I wanna do that, I'm sorry, you didn't, you didn't submit for pre-qualifications, you're not allowed to bid the job. And that is controlling quality, contractors, controlling who's gonna be working on it. There's still, there's no limit to how many can pre-qualify. So we still have quite a few. Then, so, and I'm trying to think if I answered all your questions.
You, I forget, the qualifiers you put to low bid.
Responsive and responsible, so, so when, that is very hard, it is very hard not to accept a low bid. The, the events that happen when that is the case usually is that if you as a school system have had prior, prior interactions with the contractor that have not gone well, you have direct experience to say, no, we don't. And, and a lot of times, how we handle that is if we know that upfront, we'll talk to that bidder before he ever bids and says, are you sure, you know, are you sure you want to submit a bid? I mean, there's, there's a way, there are, just, they, they know, bidders know whether they're gonna be a good bidder for you or not. They'll know if it's out of their scope. But you have to have documented, documentation that they have not performed or have, and we check references, and there's reference checks for that too. It's, it's hard not to accept a low bid.
If you don't pre-qualify the bidders, meaning especially in this market, there's a lot of spin-off contractors, cause times are good, they can jump from a bigger company to buy themselves. They might have the bonding capacity that meets your requirements, but let's say they've never done a school and they've only done grocery store chains. Alright, without the pre-qualification, they can bid.
Right.
And we have a hard time saying no if they're that low number, unless we have a really valid, cause they can protest that it's not a valid and that gets more complicated.
That's what I guess.
Right. To Ann's point, the pre-qualification is, they all have to come early, show us a list, they've done schools, they've got the bonding capacity. There's no black marks on their history, we check the references, cause that's where we wanna pull them out, not at bid day.
Right.
It's difficult on that public bid, if you have not screened them, to say all of a sudden, I just don't want you. It doesn't really work that way in the public forum.
Wouldn't it be wise to go look at some of the sites, build, construction that they have done before they get involved in the bidding?
Yes, depending on the number. If you get 15 qualified contractors, you either have to go check all of them's work or rely on their, we do a lot of it for you, but it's kinda that comfort zone.
And part of what they submit to pre-qualify are examples of what they've done in the past. We'll ask for five examples of similar projects. And we certainly could do reference checks and look at those projects at that time. So there are ways to do that.
Well, they naturally, they're gonna submit that they can do, but you need to see what they have to do.
Right.
It is, I guess, Dan's point, the different delivery methods for contracts. And this, like I said, not saying we say anyone's better or worse, some owners will choose that construction manager at risk, cause they know that contractor, they know that player. That's something that makes them sleep better at night. It does come with a cost premium, cause you're paying them for their services. We're saying, a better option if you choose to go public bid is do the pre-qualification. So we're at least screening those that are not qualified to bid it. So then the pool that's led bidding, you're at least comfortable enough, we can get the school done with them, get you the school you need for the quality you need. And it's, like I said, it's a little tough, the pre-qualification helps, cause there's firms out there right now, somebody has left a big firm and they did multi-million dollar hospitals. But now that he's on his own, he didn't have the staff, so he's doing small industrial work.
It's more of a management.
Yeah, he's more qualified, but right now, he couldn't do your school, him personally. So it's, you gotta make some discretionary choices.
Are we at liberty to have a cutoff as to number of bidders we, we want?
Yes, we've done that, we have done that. We can say, we'll, we're gonna select the five most qualified.
Right.
Or the 10 most qualified. We want competition, so the more bidders you have, the more competition. But we also, yes, you're, we can, we've done it where we can, can do, limit the number.
And the challenge, we can limit the general contractors bidding. Right now, the labor market, they're struggling getting sub bids. There's just not enough labor force out there, so we can limit that number, but it might not, some fields like mechanical, electrical, they're just tapped out on resources. So you'd be hoping to get two bids from them on that day, on those numbers. And that's, I'm gonna say, market conditions. Part of our role again is, if we see during that building design, if there's a certain market that the cost is getting extremely high, we try to develop that design to use other means and methods to get you back to something on bid day we all know is gonna be fairly accurate. So, and still gives you a long service out of the facility.
In the market, if we're first in bidding, we're not gonna have a problem with too many bidders. I can promise you that.
Yeah, the pre-qualification will...
And we've seen the same second tier, or first tier, the same plumbing, mechanical, electrical on multiple jobs. So there, there's a good pool out there, but it's a thin pool.
And I'm not sure that you, if you got people that meet your criteria, I'm not sure you can keep them from bidding if they meet your criteria for qualification, but that's just not gonna be an issue on this job at the time we're in.
You need a really valid reason to disqualify somebody.
Right.
Okay. CA?
Frankie's up.
Now the most important.
The most important part of the process.
Finish with the contracts and all that.
Oh, I what, okay. Construction administration happens after the bids are received. It starts with contracts. And again, your architect provides, writes the contracts, issues a notice of award, issues you a recommendation letter, and issues a notice to proceed. And those are just standard, again, contractual things, we're obligated to do for you, we evaluate the bids, all of that.
And your CA person, or construction administrator, or field operations person, whatever they call them, should at a minimum, you know, construct pre-construction meetings, that's where we, we meet as a group, owner's reps, and the design consultants, the MEP consultants, contractor, his consultants, or his major subs. And we lay down the ground rules of where we're gonna set portable toilets, or put up the fence, and or how we're gonna direct traffic, signage, those types of things. As the construction process begins, we'll get inundated with paperwork, reviewing, approving shop drawings, submissions, and maintaining a log. That's something that, that, that any firm should do, any field guy should do. We do it. A lot of contractors with the advent of technology, everybody's, well, the bigger firms are on web-based programs now, whether it's Procore or Semedo Exchange. So all their, all their paperwork is documented on the web-based program, everybody logs in. We do that as well, but we also keep internal logs. So when we need, we can compare logs and make sure everybody's got the same, same paperwork going in and out. It helps keep everything very smooth and dialed in. There are some instances during that process where I would call, or your field guy would call home, the owner's rep and say, I need you to look at hardware with me. We need to make sure we get that right, or casework. Pre-installation, oh?
I'm sorry, hardware is a really great example, because I know, in the work we've done with you before, there is a, is a standard that you use, because you wanna keep the keying all the same, and you don't wanna flip between schools to have different keys. So that's a, we would call that even a preferred brand alternate. So we would bid that to make sure we keep, we don't get anybody's, anybody's cylinder cores, we keep the ones that you guys already use. And then sit down, like Frankie said, with someone from probably the maintenance department to review hardware to make sure it's within the keeping of what they're already used to working on. Cause they're the ones that repair it at later dates if they need.
And the shop drawing part of, that, that phase of construction is, is really important. It's the owner's last chance to, to massage and modify anything they need to before we go buy parts and start putting them up. Cause once you buy them, you got it. Attend pre-installation meetings, the contractors should typically host these meetings, invite the sub that's gonna be doing the work. And these meetings with the scope and the size of the project we're talking about here, those meetings should be at least three to five weeks away. Architect's guy needs to show up, what architect or both, be a part of these meetings, so that you can make sure, they can make sure, that what they're gonna buy, what they're gonna put up, how they're gonna stage it, falls within the specs. And it meets the criteria that, that you, the owner, need to, to, to have it, to have it meet there. Evaluate the construction work, minimum of weekly visits, oftentimes more. You know, that, the work dictates your schedule, not the calendar, if that makes sense. Oftentimes, I'll go on to job sites on Saturdays, because guess what, it rained. Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, dried out Thursday, so the masons are working on Friday, Saturday, or the steel guy that are working on Friday, Saturday. So that's when you go, you document that stuff and you report back to the owner, this is what's happening, everything's good, or we need your input here. Keeping the owner informed on work progress and quality, kinda the same thing. you document that stuff and you report back to the owner, this is what's happening, everything's good, or we need your input here. Keeping the owner informed on work progress and quality, kind of the same thing. Um, field reports, monthly meeting reports. Everything, I'm kinda old school, everything used to be phone calls and, and faxes. It's all email now, but a constant communication with your field person and ever who the owner chooses is that, that one go-to person. So information can be funneled properly and everybody's informed. Um, the weekly field report, oh.
Well, and when you, when you say constant communication, um, what, I think what you mean is the owner is kept informed of what's happening. What's, whomever the representatives from your, your side of the table is always aware of what's happening. Um, the work is happening in the architect contractor world. So they're doing the stuff that needs to be done, but keeping the owner informed. And if there are decisions that need to be made with the owner's involvement, then that's where we bring them in to.
You said it better than I did. RFIs or request more information, we get quite a few of those um, during, during the construction phase. And they're the, the contractors' clarifications to the architect, to the designer. Architects, field guys should be responding to all those in a very timely fashion. Typically, I answer them the same day they come in, if something's really heavy duty and it requires the, the structural engineer or the civil engineer. If we've got a research, like for instance, we're doing a job down the road and we've got forced main, we thought we had gravity, so everybody's at a halt stop right now until we can address how to handle the sewer coming out of this old building. But RFIs are something that the architects, field guys should handle. If there is an RFI that requires the owner's attention, it needs to be put in front of you and you need to be a part of that, that, so you can address it appropriately. Monthly progress meetings, architects, field guy would typically handle those in this type of facility. That's a good point to um, we always start with safety concerns. If there's anything going on site that's not up to snuff. The, the fencing's in the wrong place, or it's been blown over and you didn't repair it. We got a parade coming up in Red Oak next week and we got a cordon off this or that. That's a good time to talk about that stuff. The owner's rep is usually at that meeting with the contractor and the architect's guy. And uh, depending on what's going on, on the site at that time, you might have the MEP engineer there as well, if we're setting boilers or whatever the case may be. Um, applications for payment, um, we review those every month and maintain an active log, make sure they balance. They are, when, when the pay apps come to the school system, or whoever's gonna get them to, to, to pay, they come from the architect's side, certified or approved for payment. So if it's done correctly, the architect will get that a week in advance, moving to the pay period, not at the end of the pay period. So he's got time to sit down and look at it, go through it and go, you know what, you're not gonna be fifty percent through with footings or steel next week. Let's go ahead and bring that back to forty percent. So when the owner's rep gets it, it's a done deal. It makes sense, it's been explained, and you're just, you're signing it and you're moving money. Conduct pre-final walkthroughs with the contractor and generate a punch list. That's something that they should do. Owners can be a part of that. It's not that they can't, but a lot of times that's when uh, it, it can get contentious. But it, it's, it's the architect and the contractor's chance to get on the same page with the level of finishes, whether it's carpet or paint or, or whatever. A punch list is generated, it's called a pre-final punch list. That's typically done for the most part, or very close to being done. And then you have what's called a final walkthrough with the contractor and the owner. Have never had a state agency be a part of this. USDA would if you went for that kind of financing, but I don't think that's applicable here. But that's the final walkthrough and your opportunity to look at these finishes in place and go, we're good with the carpet, we're good with the paint, we wanna fix a hole in the wall here, or this door knob sticks. And we, we, we put together a comprehensive list of all these things, so the contractor can have them and get them done. He's got thirty days to do it by contract typically. And they're usually done, all my jobs are done. But if they're not, um, and you were gonna say something, so go ahead.
Well, what I was gonna say is, is one of the, I mentioned earlier, you know, a lot of this comes right out of the contract. The pre-final is something that I think that we've added, Frankie, it makes Frankie's life easier. So he can walk through with the contractor. Um, and then what happens with that, that is, again, that's an added, just something we do for our own benefit. Um, because we get to see it and have frank conversations about what's, you know, what the, the end of the project's gonna look like. And then when it comes to the final, um, then that is a much smoother and shorter and simpler list. Because he's already had the opportunity, and all along through the construction process, he's pointing out things that need to be corrected. So um, just wanna say that, that really is something added on to, to the services of a normal contract.
Um, and it's not unusual, if it's a big facility, to um, have your field guy, he'll do it in sections of the building as they're finished. Cause a lot of times contractors will build them in phases. They'll bring in the mason crew and they'll bring in the steel crew. So, so the building kind of finishes, you know, in this, this method, so it makes sense to kind of go in and do your pre-finals in that method as well. But typically thirty days by contract and knock out all these punch list items that were generated with the owner and the architect present. Those are usually done. If they're not, um, the certificate of substantial completion is actually an AIA document that, that finalizes the project. If those warranty items, excuse me, the punch list items are not completed, then your field guy should be making a list of these items and he assigns a dollar value to them. And all those are conditions that go along with that substantial completion. Now.
Will the uh, architect be the one to do the inspecting, the different phases, uh, with the bill? Counter-bill and inspector, uh?
Both.
Both?
Both. There's a local jurisdiction having authority, which in this particular case would be Nash County, now wherever this one goes. They would do their required inspections, and then the architect would do his required inspections. The civil engineer that works for the architect would do his, and the mechanical and so forth and so on.
And that's done before. Anything that's closed in that you can't see.
Should be, yes sir.
Yes.
Certificate of occupancy is the final piece of paper that the, the, the authority having jurisdiction will issue. It gives you the right to use the building. Um, what we like to do, what architects like to do, is let that come first. In a perfect world, you get your CO and you move in, and your substantial completion, they all fall within a few days. Construction don't really go that way sometimes. So what you might wind up with is you got your CO, the local jurisdiction said, we're good. You can move in, move furniture in, start moving people in. But we feel like there's too many punch list items that you had. So we're gonna hold that substantial completion for a while, cause that actually sets your warranty. That, that sets the warranty date for when you become the owner of that building. And it does a couple, it helps the general contractor by not assigning a dollar amount to, to twenty or thirty items that, that he can fix in a few days. He might be waiting on parts, or he might have manpower scattered somewhere and he needs to get them back in. So lets you move in, lets you start using your building, but we hold that warranty just for a few days until we can get all that stuff kind of buttoned up. And your architect is your advisor and your liaison. Was there anything else I needed to say on here?
You did.
Okay. Um, oh, look, I got a whole nother slide here.
That's an easy one.
So, so, I know, we said construction, construction is, is very, very, very important. Um, and again, in the construction phase, it's the longest phase of the, of a building. Um, and so the responsibilities that you can expect, and you know, some of the things Frankie mentioned, being available, being part of the decision-making process, attending the meetings, those are all things. Those are the things that will help you stay informed about what's happening and help you be a part of that project. So um, you know, and, and then there, that's a baseline level and the, each owner can add to that as they see fit. So um, we have some owners that wanna attend every weekly meet, be there at the same day he's there, so they can walk through and talk about it as we go. We have some owners that wanna show up at the monthly meeting and then they do their own thing for the rest of the time. So again, that's really an owner's call.
But, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
The, the general idea is your field guy should be good enough to, to be your eyes and ears.
Right.
You don't have to dedicate manpower from the school's side to be there to watch what's going on, talk with the subcontractors and, you know, help dictate the work that's going on in the field and, and make sure they've met in the intent.
The intent and the content.
That's right.
Frankie will tell the contractor day one, that if my owner comes to the job site and instructs you, you are not allowed to do that until it comes from me. And so that's just to keep everything running smoothly, because he really is in charge of that phase and making sure that you're getting what you're paying for. And that the documents that are being constructed, the building that's being constructed comply with the documents. So that's just something for you to know. Um, we have a lot of owners that wanna be involved like that, so we have to, we have to educate our owners too sometimes.
Procedures?
Yep.
A quick question before you.
Sure.
And I think you had mentioned earlier that full-time site representation is a supplemental service?
So full-time is known as clerk of the works in old school terms. Um, that is where um, your architect would employ someone to be on site, as, as much as the contractor's on site. So have, maybe have a, a desk or an office, or at least most of the time. Um, to be honest, we've not really had a project where that is needed.
Do you see it much?
No, we don't. Um.
Have you ever had a project that you worked on where you had a clerk of the works, or had to be clerk of the works?
What we have done is we've been owner's representative to some projects, but that was more of a, a very light project industrial. You know, it was kind of a fast, you know, we were not um, designers, we were there on behalf of the owner.
That's probably more common in our region, like on a major medical work, where you've got multiple buildings. That might make more practical sense. But um, our region, we just don't have that large of projects. We need that full-time.
We have not seen that.
It's really full-time additional, cause Frankie's still there doing his work. Contractor's still doing his work.
Right.
You know, it's um, it becomes just an extra set of eyes.
And remember, the, the, the work kind of dictates your schedule, not, and, and Hitchcock Community College, we just finished up, their center for innovation over there, and uh, that was a CM and RIS project, five, five and a half million dollars.
Yeah, five point two.
So that CM was so layered with management, everything they had was just like, damn, we're doing this today, and they would do it. Damn. So I was over there every day, you know, I was either in pre-installation meetings or I was answering questions on the, the yard with the, you know, with the superintendent, which they had two or three of them, and then an assistant PM, and then a PM, and then a senior. So.
That is a good point.
But the, the, the point is, as the work ramped up, I was there, you know, whether I was there a day or, or ten days.
Without full-time services being paid for, but it's really as.
I was not technically clerk of the works, but I was there a whole lot, yeah.
The, the, construction has changed dramatically. Actually, our, our field and pretty much yours as well. Between emails, and now owners that text me, it's almost instantaneous contact. I mean, you really can't even get away from it. So it's um, you never really feel like you're out of touch. If he's not standing on site, if he gets an email that needs us backing him up, within seconds, we've got it.
We FaceTime sometimes.
So it's just um, it's a different time right now. You're just so in contact. Yeah.
Immediate gratification, that's kinda. Um, so, oh, go ahead, was that answered? Okay. Um, again, responsibilities during construction, closeout and warranty are our last two things, and then we'll, we'll stop talking. Um, and I'll, Frankie again handles closeout.
That's fine. So we, we punched out the building, we generated the punch list, got the CO, you got the keys, you moved in, you started working out of your building. So we move into what's called closeout phase of, of this project, which is the last phase, I believe. On-site owner training. Typically, one or two people from the facility's side or the maintenance side would be a part of this. Nowadays, we videotape it and, and everybody gets a thumb drive or a drop box or whatever, so they know how to operate boilers, chillers, those types of things. Um, and it's on file, you always have it. And we do it, we, we don't ram it down your throat. They, they get, you know, a day of this, a day of that, and we meet your schedule. Owner's operation and maintenance manuals, we collect those, we go through, we'll make sure they're, they're bound, they're tabbed. I say bound, it's electronic unless you want paper. Um, you can get both. I give owners both all the time. But I'll go through those with the, with our consultants, the engineers, to make sure everything you need to take care of your building for the next thirty to forty years is there. Owner's warranty manual and letters of certification. Different manual, but it's got all the warranties, from the general contractor to the manufacturer's warranty. You basically got a year, and I know I'm skipping ahead, but you've got a general contractor's year warranty. Once that's up, you still have the manufacturer's warranty. So, and, and your, your field guy, your architect, should be helping you after that year. If you have something come up, you should be able to call them and they should respond. That's just a part of the, the service that you probably won't find in that, that book of contracts there, but that is something that they should be doing. Owner, uh, attic stock and spare parts, they should be cataloging and inventorying all that stuff. Each spec section in their specification book should have a minimum number of part percentages that you should be getting. And um, your field guys should be documenting all that stuff, coordinating where they need it. And uh, you get like whole buckets of paint, not half buckets of paint, things like that. Collecting and preparing the final data for closeout. And, and that all leads up to the final pay application. Things that you've got to have that, that release you um, from, from the, you know, as-built documentation, certified punch list completion, record drawings, which are, uh, we actually take contractors' as-builds, that they mark up in the field if they move things during construction, which happens. Then we take those and turn them into record drawings. So you get a computer-formatted full set of drawings that are a replication of what was actually built in the field. Um, affidavit releasing liens, releasing debts and claims, and the contractor's consent assurance. Once you get all of that, we sign the final pay application and we're in the warranty period at that point.
And all.
Owner's responsibility is just to receive the closeout documentation.
Find a good place to store it where you can get to it later, file it, file it away.
There's usually questions that come along with that stuff, but that's, that's part of it.
Yeah.
Then the uh, the one-year warranty period I talked about, that says eleven-month walkthrough. I typically like to do a ten-month walkthrough, because if we actually have a list of things that need to be done. It's, it's needy as we are, right? We, we can't expect the contractor to drop everything he's doing. It, it just gives, I like that extra thirty days. They, they need that to, if we've got pieces and parts we need to buy to replace something from a fire alarm or something like that, it's just, it's better to have that extra thirty days built in there. They should be doing that ten or eleven-month walkthrough and then, um, like I said, beyond the warranty period, things come up and owners need help. If you can't get up with the, the boiler manufacturer, call us, you know, call them. They should be able to track them down. They know these folks, they deal with them all the time, and, and should be to get you in touch with them if needed.
So you see why construction is the most important part in what we, in what we do, um, cause it makes the project all tie together, and it really is. So just, just to wrap up, um, you know, public records are a great thing, right? So we did look at the presentation that was made to you by your project, by the project management firms. Um, we saw this slide that said, things not provided by an architect. What struck us, and what, what I've done is replicate those list of items, everything that you see in red are things we just talked about that we do. And most of those are things that are, we do by contract with you, that are right here in our contract and the contract you use. Um, so those things that you were told that we don't do, your, your architect, whomever you choose, are obligated to you to do them by contract. So that's, just want you to be aware of that, cause um, that is part of the contract. Um, again, in blue, full-time onsite project management is an additional service. Um, land acquisition, we are not realtors, we do not purchase land, we don't do that. So we just wanted to make you aware of that and to make, again, let you have information to make informed decisions.
And um, I said, um, our fir, we've worked on projects with the project management, or the owners of project management firm. Some provide a very valuable service, some a little bit along the way. The challenge, I would say, with your project, your school has a set bucket of money. A lot of times, we see that private, on private dollars, because that cost for the PM helping the owner is not coming out of the construction dollars. If you've got a set dollar of money, I'd love to see those fees come out of another kitty. Cause when you're looking at a school, it's dedicated money, you have dedicated needs. Every dollar that comes out of that that is not going to bricks and mortar, when you think of a school campus, um, think of a school campus, when you reduce that cost for spending too much on surveys or any type of ancillary cost, I've still gotta have a media center, I'm still gonna have cafeteria, still have admin, still have the same bus parking lot, the same amount of stacking traffic for pickup. The item that gets left on the table to cut is classroom space. So, we don't wanna do any cost coming out of this bucket, not that you can't have the third-party service, we hate to see it come out of that fund, 'cause you're directly impacting what you need the most, is gonna be classroom space. So just, I said, the third-party can serve you a purpose, different owners feel like they need them, some don't. We, I said, we've seen a level where I've had multiple owners reps, it's just, I don't want the dollars to come out of what that construction budget is, 'cause you really need it to go to the school.
And we would love to answer any questions that, again, other questions that you might have. We've completed what we had prepared.
The work that you have done to this point, have you been hired, or you just-
No.
Okay.
Informational.
This, this is just, when we say we, we're talking, in general, we, not, not our firm, just in general.
This is just, this is general, okay?
Not that we wouldn't do it. This is just for informational.
What you've laid out there, even before you get to construction, you're talking about, I'm just sitting here thinking myself, you're talking about probably eight to twelve months?
Probably about eight, yes.
Yeah, eight to twelve months before you can put it out for a bid, which, and one thing that I wanted to ask, if you're hired, going to the site and looking for maybe unseen things that you don't normally, soil testing, 'cause sometime this part of the county is real rocky. And when you go down a deep, you hit, well, I know at my house, I don't even have to go three feet from knocking rock.
It's unsuitable, the soils is the question.
That's, that's something that can cause, if you didn't, if you didn't see it before, cause for a change order and spending more money that you didn't originally think of that you would have to. And I like a situation where you don't have that many, minimize some change orders, 'cause it may, it may be in the budget and it may not. I know you got to make the budget a little bit, a little bit larger than what it's gonna really cost for unseen situations. But I like to see us minimizing.
There, there are lots of, there are very standard ways that that's, that situation's handled for unsuitable soils, because a geotechnical report is typically done early in the process. And so we, now, you can drill a hole, several holes on-site, and you might miss the one rock piece, but generally, we, we try to put them in areas of, identify where they go in areas of the building that are critical for, for foundations and parking and design. When we see the geotechnical report come back, we have a better understanding of what could be underground. At that point, what we would do along in those phases is modify the budget to include certain amounts, certain cubic yardage of soils or rock to be removed. And so that is a number that we try to build into the budget before we ever get to, to construction. So that's one way. The other way, if it's still unknown, or for, for some reason, a particular area's missed, that, you know, the, the geotech doesn't pick up something, then that is also contingency, what contingency is in there for. That's another reason for the importance of contingency for some things like that.
You mentioned in your presentation about volatility.
Mm-hmm.
You have some examples, I assume you were talking about in construction?
Yes.
What are some examples?
So we are seeing, and, and depends on type of construction. So the type of structural system is used, the type of finishes that are used, but I can give you examples, and, and we knew, we looked, we knew these numbers going into, but the project, a project we bid very recently, bid, and it was pretty standard, lightweight construction, I would say. It came in at a, at an average cost of about two hundred and thirty-five dollars a square foot. Now, our low bid was less than that, about a one ninety-eight, so right at two hundred. But if you aver, we, that's another thing, we like to look at all the bids that come in throughout the high, throughout the low, average the rest to kinda get a real cost for what, you know, that might be. And so, I think school construction right now, we've seen some coming in at around one hundred and seventy-five to two hundred dollars a square foot. I think for this project, you should be planning on two fifty, two hundred to two fifty a square foot, just based on what's happening in the market right now. That's, 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 that's kinda cold, hard reality, I hate to say, but it is what's happening with all the labor force and the, the costs out there now, so.
I think the best point to get out of Mr. Bellfield's comment was in the selection of an architect firm, the question needs to be asked, what is your history on having change orders show up on your job? That would be a question I would ask any architect or firm. What, do you have a history of a lot of change orders, or can you tell me you almost never have a change order before you select an architect? Because if an architect does the job he's supposed to do up front, there just shouldn't be many change orders.
We can, we can answer that for you. We didn't-
I, I don't think that would be fair with the part you're here for today. I would hope you would get a chance at a later date to answer that question, as we interview, as the school board interviews architects. Other questions, Mr. Lamb, that your board members may have?
Anybody else have any questions?
One last one. It might not be material to this, but you, you mentioned the plans and taking, in, in the drawing of your plans, does DPI or something have a database based on what we're going to do that you pull those from, or are you starting from?
There is a database, we have a prototype there, there, those are things that are used in school construction. I would tell you, for, for this site and for your school, it's not, it is, in our experience with prototypes, let me say that, there, there is never a print, a plan that can be pulled directly out of the database and put on a site and used as is. There are always owner, cert, every client's different, there are always things that you all want to do that may not be in a prototype. For instance, Red Oak Elementary has a gym on the property that I would recommend saving, I hope that's what you're doing. We don't build gyms on elementary school properties anymore. And so, for instance, if you were to take the gym down, the, the prototypes would have multipurpose rooms, they're half the size of that gym, they don't have bleachers. Those are just some things that, that may or may not work about those prototypes, but there are databases, and again, we have some there, based on some schools we've done for you. But every, but site, site work is never prototype, site is always something that has to be done from new, so adapt, adaptations to that are what, where the changes start coming in.
And the current version of the statute, if you take a prototype off the DPI website, you can't make any changes to it other than code. So you're very restricted if you use the DPI prototype.
And you probably will see some changes with your recent house bill, classroom sizes, that's gonna have a trickle-down effect. You're designing your school for the future, not where you stand today, so you need to take all that in account with what you do in your next school.
Good point. The real purpose of tonight, to be like I normally am, just forthcoming, is that we know that our board has felt the whole time you didn't need to use a project manager. We thought it was a duplication of services and a cost that we feel like will not fit in the budget that we have established for this school. We also know that all the construction we've done, and all the construction that y'all have done in the past, and Community College, has not used that method. I, I also have learned, and, and I don't think I asked y'all, but I talked to numerous architects when this first came up, just to see how they felt, working within a project that has a project management firm, and I didn't find any architectural firm that really preferred to do it that way, because they also feel like it's a duplication of services. So that's the reason that I got with Franklin and asked him, would y'all be willing to at least hear from a firm to see what they do with a project like this? And I think what you see on that last slide right there is more telling than anything else, that they would be a lot of duplications of services. Of course, I know y'all have looked at your project management several different phases, maybe just for selecting the site, which you have done. I don't know where y'all are going from now, or you talked about the whole thing at one time, which was a tremendous cost, you talked about a pared-down section of that for some reduction in cost, but what our board hopes is that you, you have your site selected now, that you would choose to use an architectural firm from this point forward, because we would just be saving money that we could put in classroom space, or whatever else is gonna be on your list of desire. That was the real exercise that we hoped to accomplish tonight. And I, I, I do wish you'd asked any questions you had, 'cause these are the people, these are an architect that you've used before, it's one that I'm familiar with, they are local, of course, which is always important to both boards to use local people when we can, but that's another whole day. If you decide to do this, then you start the process of your RFP to find that architect that you're gonna use, and you're gonna have a presentation from several of them. I mean, you're required to do that, but you should do that anyway. And I would certainly save that question, what is your history on change orders when you start interviewing these architects, along with many other things? Does Board of Commissioners have any more questions? I'll put it back over. We sure we don't have any more questions before we adjourn?
I'd like to thank them for sharing this information.
Yeah, and this, this is at no cost, they, they were willing to do this for the two boards, in hopes of being at least asked to make a proposal to do this project. That, that, we didn't promise them anything, 'cause we can't promise them anything, but I hope, that's where we are.
I'd like to add one thing. I'd like to thank Ms. Leggett for coming to our site selection meeting we had, to see the presentation, and then we voted for the site selection. I also like to thank the County Commissioners for the wonderful dinner tonight, and-
Yeah, we fixed it all, Miss Lamb.
And I'm speaking for myself and our board. We have, you know, we've had some buildings before that had change orders, and we've had buildings before that took ten years to solve a conflict. We wanna make sure that we do this building right, because for some of us, it might be the last time we are involved with a building. But I do know, we are in the children business, the children of Cedar Grove, Swift Creek, and Red Oak, and the taxpayers at Cedar Grove, Swift Creek, and Red Oak deserve a new school, and they deserve it now.
We were there.
Properly built.
Properly built.
The lady was quite impressive with her presentation, the guys were okay. Thank you, you did a wonderful job, thank you.
Is that your only comment, Rick? Fair enough.
Just one thing that I would say, this is just me speaking for Fred Bellfield, I would love to have seen that site more centrally located between those three schools, and I stand by that, it won't change.
All right, there's no other comment from Board of Commissioners, and we can adjourn, do not need to reset. Entertained a motion for adjournment of the Board of Commissioners, moved by Commissioner Cohen, seconded by Commissioner Bellfield. Any questions on that motion? All in favor of the motion, let be known we say aye. Any opposed, by a like sign, Board of Commissioners stand the adjournment, sir.
I would entertain a motion from the National Government Board of Education, be adjourned. Motion by Ms. Washington, seconded by Mr. Silver, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, likewise. Motion carried.